If you have something, stop me at any time. Otherwise, I'll just go ahead and start walking through the chapters, highlighting the information that you need to know. I would say, obviously, you know, we'll go all the way back to chapter one. You obviously need to know the alphabet, otherwise you can't read, right? So make sure you know your alphabet well. It's going to be important to know which letters are gutters. So make sure that you you know what the four gutters are. Raish is in that group. It's not it's not technically a guttural, but it behaves like a guttural a lot of times. It can't take a dogesh, for example. So the gutters plus raish often get grouped together, but I don't know that I would call it. Raish isn't actually a guttural, okay? Make sure you know your final letter forms.
We're not gonna have a kind of a curly question where it asks for the gutters and it's trying to trick us by not including raish?
Yeah, I mean, the tricky thing would be if it said, which of these is a guttural? And raish was included with another guttural. Raish is not a guttural. If there's a question on the exam that asks for the guttural and it expects you to include raish, I will give you, like, don't consider raish a guttural. Raish is not a guttural. So if there's a question on the quiz that implies that raish is a guttural, I'm gonna throw it out because raish isn't a guttural and that's a bad question. I don't think that there is, but if you happen to see one, just remember, there are four gutters, olif, ayin, hay and chet. All right, you're not gonna have to know, well, you probably are gonna... Do make sure that you know your pronunciations because there probably will be a question like you've seen before that's like, what sound does do these letters and vowels make? And maybe it's like go or something with a gimmel and a holam. Or maybe it's, you know, bay with a bait and a sere or something like that. So do know what your pronunciations are. These are the pronunciations that Fatah is using. So bait is the V sound. Pay, this is without the dogesh. Soft B is the V sound. Soft cough is that very much like chet. And then the soft pay without the dogesh is that F sound. That's pretty much all you need to know from lesson one. So know your gutters, obviously know your letters, and then know which letters have different pronunciations depending on the dogesh. Then you want to know your your vowels. Obviously, the most important information here is to know which vowels are short. There are five short vowels. Patach, segel, hirik, komets, katzuf and kibbutz. Those are your five short vowels. So you need to know what those are. And you also need to know what type of sound they make. So patach makes an A type sound. Segel makes an E type sound. Hirik makes an I type sound. Komets katzuf is an O type sound. And where is komets katzuf? There we go, O type sound. And then kibbutz is the U, U type sound. You know, on the length, again, the most important thing is, sorry, which ones are short? That's what's most important. It's good to know which ones are long and medium and very short, but know which ones are short. That's what's most important. All right, so that's alphabet and vowels. Lesson three. You are going to need to know how to tell the difference between a silent shavah and a vocal shavah. So remember, the short is silent rule will answer almost all of the shavah questions. Is the shavah immediately preceded by a short vowel? If the answer is yes, it is silent. If the answer is no, it is vocal. Here's the trap. Remember, anytime you see a dogesh and a shavah in the same letter, that shavah will be vocal. The only exception, and I hate this. I hate that it's an exception. But the only exception is this stupid one right here where you have the shavah underneath of this. This is like, this is, this is my worst enemy as a Hebrew teacher. This single word breaks like five different rules. But, I mean, it doesn't, but it would be so much easier if this didn't exist. All right, so this is the one situation where you have a dogesh and a shavah in the same letter. This dogesh is lenay, it's weak. And this is a silent shavah because when you have two consecutive shavahs at the end of the word, they're both silent. But honestly, well, the shortest silent rule would take care of this, actually. Okay, so here's the deal. Only use the dogesh shavah rule. You know, dogesh and shavah in the same letter means it's vocal. Only use that after the shortest silent rule. So have the shortest silent rule apply first. I can't give you just one rule. It's unfortunate. I wish I could just give you one rule, but there are going to be tricky ones. Let's go back and I'll tell you what, I'm gonna post that video because I did a snippet. I pulled a snippet out of a video conference covering the, really what we're talking about here is the dogesh forte is what causes the problem. And it's, it's not a violation of the shortest silent rule. And I explained that in the video, how shortest silence still applies here. So I'll just repost that video. But let's take a look at it real quick. Let's find that mean old dogesh. Maybe it's not here. Oh, I'm in the wrong lesson. There we go. All right. This is it. Keep talu, this is the tricky thing. All right, so you think that short is silent indicates that this would be silent because it's immediately preceded by a short vowel. The problem is, it's not. It's not immediately preceded by a short vowel. If you break this word up, you get kof, hirik, tav, the first tav, with a silent shavah. So kof hirik tav with a silent shavah and then tav shavah lamed shurik. So this is that situation where you've got two internal shavahs, two consecutive internal shavahs. The first one's silent, the second one is vocal. All right, so shortest silence still applies as long as you understand there's actually a tet shavah hidden inside of that dog, like that dogesh represents a tet shavah. If you know that, then you ask yourself, is this shavah immediately preceded by a short vowel? No, it's immediately preceded by the intervening shavah that's hidden in the dogesh. Does that make sense? And if not, if there's any questions about that, let's talk about them because this is inevitably going to trip some students up on the exam.
So I remember, I think that if there's two shavahs, the first one's silent and the second one's vocal. That's also a rule, isn't it?
Yes. Now, that's, that's, that's in the middle of a word. If you have two consecutive shavahs at the very end, like that two Ms, or sorry, two Fs form of the verb, those happen to be silent. But again, that's why that word is an exception to the rule. It's also an exception to the rule that you won't have a dogesh at the end of a word. You know, it's like, it breaks a lot of rules. So internally, if you have two shavahs within a word, the first will be silent, the second one will be vocal. And you can remember that the silent comes first and the vocal comes second, just alphabetically. S comes before V. Silent comes before vocal in the dictionary. So the first one will be silent, the second one will be vocal. Again, if it's at the very end, obviously, you can't end a word with a vocal shavah. So in that case, if it's at the very end, like, like here, well, then they're both gonna be silent. Any other questions about especially this particular situation with the dogesh and the shavah? Because this is the one that this trips students up every single semester. All right, moving on. Okay, so know your rules of shavah. And again, I will post a link back to that announcement where I've got kind of the graphics for, you know, here's the flowchart for how you decide. But each of those graphics, the one for the shavah and the one for the dogesh, has a shortcut rule that's going to answer the question probably 90% of the time. And if you just stick with that rule first, you don't have to worry about all the different questions. So now let's go to dogesh, okay? Let me just pull that up while we're talking here. Let's go over here. All right, so the dogesh, the shortcut rule, the one that's gonna solve it for you 90% of the time, is the sound before the dogesh letter, a consonant sound or a vowel sound? So let's go and apply that to a bunch of, here we go. All right, so mid bar, what is the sound before the dogesh? Silent shavah because it's short. If it's silent, that means that this is a consonantal sound. So consonantal means it's a weak dogesh. All right, what about kidash? The sound before the dogesh. Remember, we've got a, well, okay, we don't know if this is doubling or not yet. So is the sound before the dogesh a consonant or a vowel? We've got the hirik here. That's a vowel. That means it's a strong dogesh. It's able to carry, it's able to carry a vowel behind it and a vowel in front of it. It's strong enough to carry two vowels. All right, if it's a weak vowel, then it's only gonna be able to carry its own vowel. That's how I remember. That may not be helpful to you. What about eshaw? Again, the sound before it is a hirik, so that is a strong vowel. It can carry two vowels. I'm sorry, a strong dogesh. It can carry two vowels. What about niz bach? Again, because this is a short vowel, the hirik, that means this shavah is silent. So the sound before the dogesh is the Z of the Zion. That's consonantal. That means it's a weak dogesh. It can only carry its own vowel. Mish teh. Here we go, again, a silent shavah, so the shen is the sound. Consonantal, that makes it a weak dogesh. Last one here, mid daber. We've got a vowel before the dogesh. It carries both vowels. That means it's a strong dogesh, a doubling dogesh. Sound good, straightforward? Any questions about the dogesh? I know I've spent a lot of time on lessons one through three and you'll probably only get about like three or four questions from there. But this is stuff that you guys at this point have got to have down. So if you don't have it down, or if you find out that you missed one of these on the midterm, for your own sake, I mean, it doesn't hurt me one way or the other, but for your own sake, if you want to do well in Hebrew, come back to these exercises and practice this some more because you've got to have this down. It's gonna really slow down your reading if you have to think very long about whether a shavah is silent or vocal or whether a dogesh is weak or strong. I'm at a point, just because of exposure, it's just repetition. I don't know any other secrets. It's just I've seen so many Hebrew words that I can go through here and I can say, weak, strong, strong, weak, weak, strong, strong, weak, weak, strong. This one's tricky because it's only got one vowel. It doesn't have the, but this is strong as well. So that's just repetition. And you want to get to a point eventually where you can see them that quickly. So that will help improve your reading speed. All right. Moving on, the noun, basic forms. Is this where he doesn't have a chart? Well, it's kind of a chart. And give me a box. I need a box for a chart. But this chart right here, chart. This is what you want to pay attention to. Ah, this is terrible, actually. Doesn't he have a better one, like a final chart? Here we go, the summary. This chart right here. This is what you want to have mastered. Okay, now again, this is generally speaking. For example, the, the word, I think it's the word ear, the word for city. Ear would look like it fits here. It doesn't have the kometsay ending. But ear is feminine. I'm almost certain about that. I hope I'm not wrong. I might be thinking of another word, but I think that's true. Right, so that's what you gotta remember. Similarly, nashim. Nashim is the word for women. So that is sometimes feminine. But those are irregular nouns. Those aren't the normal pattern. So the idea of this chart is when you come across a noun in your reading that you're not familiar with, if you see a hirik yod mem, that's probably masculine plural. If you see a holam vav tav, that's probably feminine plural. If you see a kometsay, that's probably feminine singular. And I'll add another one here that we'll come across in a few weeks. If you see a tav at the end of a word, let's say at the end of a noun or at the end of an adjective, that's usually going to be feminine. If it's a holam vav tav, it'll be a feminine plural. If it's anything else with tav, like a segel or a patach or something like that, it's probably going to be singular feminine. But this is what you really want to know is these endings. Kometsay feminine singular, hirik yod mem masculine plural, holam vav tav feminine plural. If you master that, then that's 95% of what you need to take from the lesson four here. All right, any questions about those noun forms? Those also happen to be the adjective forms. And here's the thing, for adjectives, adjectives don't lie. Adjectives don't lie. If you see an adjective that's hirik yod mem, it will always be masculine plural. If you see an adjective that's kometsay, it will always be feminine singular. Adjectives don't lie. Nouns may be tricky and irregular, but adjectives are not, okay?
Remind me again, what's an adjective?
Okay, so adjectives, let's just start with the grammar definition of an adjective. An adjective is a word that describes a noun. So if we were to say, the book, that's a noun. But if we were to say, the green book, green is an adjective. Green describes the book. If I were to say, the heavy book, or the small book, or the old book, those are all English words that describe the nouns. But in Hebrew, nouns and adjectives are gonna have very similar forms. Adjectives will tend to have a long vowel in the second syllable, but not always. So that's something to kind of distinguish them as well. But the idea is that when you have nouns and adjectives, adjectives, again, they describe nouns, they modify nouns. And so whatever the adjective is describing, whatever noun it's connected to, if it's green book, it would be green is connected to book, that adjective has to reflect, it has to honestly reflect the number and gender of the noun. So let's take that example of city. Just make sure I'm not using a bad example here. I want to make sure that city is actually irregular. Ear, okay, so yes, ear is feminine. Even though it looks masculine, it is feminine. All right, so let's go back to our word document here. All right, so if I wanted to say, if I wanted to say city or a city, I would say ear. If I wanted to say the city, have we had adjectives yet? We had to have, because you've learned gadol and that sort of a thing. When did we have those? Okay, lesson 10. Oh, that was just, have we done lesson 10 yet?
I just finished nine.
Sorry, guys. All right, this is pre-learning for next week then, I guess. Yeah, okay, well, then you won't need to worry about that. But adjectives, basically, you know, even though ear is feminine, though it looks masculine here, if I went to say the city, I would say ha, oops, I would say ha. Year. But if I wanted to say the large city, I would say hot ear. Ha ear, ha gadolah. Gadol, which is normally gadol, but here we're adding a kometsay ending, so this gets reduced. Gadolah, this has the feminine singular ending because ear is feminine singular. So the adjective won't lie about the gender and number. It might look like these disagree. It might look like this is masculine singular and this is feminine singular, but it's not. Okay, so ha ear, ha gadolah is going to tell you that ear is feminine singular. All right, but gadolah, you could see this in any context and know that gadolah, if you know that gadol is an adjective, you would know that gadolah is a feminine singular adjective. So what I mean to tell you is that when we learn adjectives next week, the same chart, the same chart that we learned for nouns, this is the, the endings that you'll learn for adjectives, okay? No new endings for adjectives. We're using the same endings that we use for the nouns. So that's good news. You don't have to memorize a new chart. But as far as the midterm goes, you do need to know that this is the basic rule for how nouns are formed, whether they're, or I should say how they're inflected with regard to, with regard to gender and number. All right, don't forget, I don't think it's on the midterm, but don't forget about the dual form. This is that weird, we sometimes call this a Hebrew diphthong, this patach yod hirik mem. Anytime you see patach yod hirik mem, realize that the accent is always on the patach here and this creates a diphthong syllable. So this would be yadaim, yadaim. Yomaim, and that means two of something. Any questions about nouns?
No, other question before I forget. On your thing you said at the start of the week, you said that the exam is due by 11:59, but I'm assuming that is, that's not Thursday. That'd be Saturday, wouldn't it? Because
Did I say Thursday?
You didn't say any day.
Oh, yeah, okay, I should have, sorry. I asked if I said Thursday because actually during finals week, if you're not graduating, all assignments are due on Thursday. But yes, the midterm's Saturday. It's just standard 11:59. I should have said Saturday. I don't know why I left that out.
I'm pretty sure that's in Canvas in the actual exam thing anyways. Just thought I'd check.
Yeah, no, good, good check, yeah. Yeah, I should have said Saturday. I don't know why I mentioned it other than it was the, I think it's the only assignment other than you might have done a peer review this week too, which reminds me that I need to send out reminders for peer review. But all right, so that's nouns. Pronouns. Pronouns, pretty straightforward. You just need to memorize these as if they're vocabulary words, which is how he presents them in the previous chapter. You know, your vocabulary for the nouns lesson is basically the pronouns. I think this is the easiest way to memorize the pronouns is just to treat them like vocabulary words. So assuming that you've done that, there's really not much else you need to know about pronouns for the midterm, other than the form, you know, be able to translate them. Obviously, when it comes to the definite article, you know, that's a different story. You need to, let's find that. I think he has a chart here for this one. Oh, no, he didn't. I remember complaining about no chart. Did I make a chart? I feel like I did. Let's go over here. I don't think I announced it, but I think I made a chart in the vocabulary spreadsheet. We'll find out. Maybe not. Nope. Nope. Huh. Doesn't look like I did. Okay, maybe I'll put a chart together because this whole, this whole chapter can easily just be broken down into, there are really, let's just say there are three forms. You could say there's four forms. You could say there's five forms, depending on how you identify, by how you define a form. So let's just say there's four forms that the definite article can take. It can take the hay patach dogesh form, which is probably the most frequent form. And that's sort of the standard or basic form. Hay patach dogesh, pretty good chance you're looking at a definite article here. 90% of the time, 95% of the time, you see a hay patach dogesh. That's the definite article. Sometimes you'll see a hay patach without the dogesh. That's when you have a guttural. I would say somewhere around 85 to 90% of the time when you see hay patach, it's going to be the definite article. If you see hay patach and the next letter is a hay or a chet, that probably jumps up to closer to 95% chance that it's going to be the definite article. Okay, so form number one is hay patach dogesh. Form number two is hay patach without the dogesh. But that's only gonna happen before a hay or a chet. Form number three is hay komets. But that's only going to happen before an olif, an ayin or a raish. And then form number four, the rarest of all, is the hay segel. If you see a hay segel at the beginning of a word, there's probably a 70% chance that that's the definite article. If the next letter is chet, hay or ayin, well, then that chance jumps up to about 90, 95%. Okay, so just know that these are the three forms that the definite article can take. If you see any of these four at the beginning of a word, there's a good chance that's the definite article. All right, so just be aware of that. The four forms it can take is hay patach dogesh, hay patach, hay komets and hay segel. Any questions about the definite article? All right, let's look at the kal perfect verb. For the kal perfect verb, honest to goodness, memorize the paradigm in 6.10. Like, I would say just memorize, you know, the farthest column to the left here. This is what you need to memorize. These other columns are just showing you how the forms are built off of the appropriate pronoun. Okay, so you don't need to pay attention to, you know, these middle two columns necessarily if you've already understood that information. Just memorize this leftmost column here. One suggestion, and I'll pull this up. I don't know if I've shared this. Probably not. I shared it with one student. Maybe I posted it to the class, I don't remember. I don't recommend memorize anymore publicly because the main reason why I used to recommend it, they actually don't do anymore, which is the memory aids. You can still access them on the website, not on the mobile. On the website you can, but you have to change your settings and it's kind of complicated. But if you can access the memory aids, then it's great. But unfortunately, you can't really access it anymore. So kal perfect suffixes, this is what I would recommend is creating like flashcards. And on each flashcard, just put the suffixes. So, you know, for 3MS, I just said no suffix. But kometsay, tav komets, tav shavah, I know this is really small. Tav komets, tav shavah, tav hirik yod, holam vav, or sorry, shurik. Tav segel mem, tav segel noon, and then noon shurik. Just make a separate flashcard for each of these endings. And then on the opposite side, put the pronoun. I wouldn't put the parsing necessary, well, you can, but make sure you put the pronoun there because this is the pronoun that you want to connect. If you connect tav hirik yod to one CS, I mean, that's great. But then you have to connect one CS to I. So I just cut out the middle man. I just connect tav hirik yod to I. All right, and so if you do that, if you're having trouble with your perfect suffixes, which by the way, if at this point you're still having trouble, do this. Get these suffixes down before we move to the imperfect conjugation. Because if you don't have these down before we move to the imperfect, you're going to have a lot of time, a lot of trouble, a hard time getting the imperfect down because the imperfect kind of builds off of what we've done here. So what this looks like in the kind of app that I've created or the flashcards I've created is I get this, I get sure, oh, I actually want to learn this. I don't want to not sure why it's, here we go. Okay, so they, and this is gonna force me to go backwards too. So what, what suffix should I use for they? That's gonna be the shurik. What subject should I use for you masculine plural? That's gonna be tem. What does this suffix mean? Oh, this is learning, so it tells me. All right, tem, what does this mean? This is you masculine plural. Shurik, that is they. And then you feminine plural, that's gonna use ten. All right, so I'm not gonna keep going here, but you get the idea. If you can create those flashcards, it's gonna make it a lot easier to master those suffixes. Please have those suffixes mastered before we move on to the imperfect, okay? Any questions about the kal perfect paradigm?
Now, when we hit this one, it freaked me out. It's, I did a, a whole, a whole sheet of exactly what you said.
Yeah.
It actually helps by trying to create these things. It helps.
Yes, when you, and that's how I, when I was learning Hebrew, that's, and I did this for Greek too. When I had to learn paradigms, the way I learned them is just writing out the chart over and over and over and over again. I think if I had done the flashcard method, I probably would have learned a little bit quicker. But that, you try it. You were, you do what's best for you. Some people, writing it out doesn't work at all. And so for them, definitely try the flashcards and see if that works. But either way, you have got to have these suffixes mastered in order to do well when we get to the imperfect, okay? Any other questions about the kal perfect? All right, let's go to the next lesson. Sentences with verbs, again. We've still got a lot of students who are struggling with the sentence translation. I'm gonna send out a reminder to watch the video lectures that I, or not video lectures, watch the video conferences, the conference videos that we've done in the past because I spent a lot of time walking through sentences and this two-stage translation process. Stage one, when you get to a sentence. Let's find some complicated sentences here. Stage one, when you get to a sentence. All right, stage one, when you get to a sentence, analyze each Hebrew word one by one. Don't get overwhelmed by how many Hebrew words there are in a sentence. Don't get overwhelmed by not recognizing a bunch of them. Just start with the first word and look at it. Here, I see the komets patach pattern. That jumps out at me. It's a three-letter word. This is screaming, even if I don't recognize these three letters as a verb that I've learned, the three letters with the komets patach pattern screams out kal perfect 3MS. All right, so then I think, what verb have I learned that goes shen lamed chet? And that is obviously shalach is a verb that we've learned. This is the kal perfect 3MS form, and it means sent. Now, I've learned that I have to kind of modify how I've taught parsing. I'm saying it means sent. I used to say it means he sent. Understand that when I gloss this word with he sent, that he pronoun should be in parentheses. Okay, you are only going to supply the he pronoun if there's not an explicit Hebrew subject in the Hebrew sentence. And the reason why we supply that pronoun is because English requires a subject in its sentences, whereas Hebrew does not always require. So if this was just shalach et haNavi, that would, that would be fine in Hebrew. Hebrew doesn't need hamelik here to create a sentence. It can simply say shalach et haNavi. Now, in English, we can't just say sent the prophet. That's why I glossed this with he sent, because in English, we need a pronoun. But if Hebrew, if the Hebrew sentence has a subject, then ignore that pronoun, that pronoun should not be in your translation, because I have people translating this sentence, he sent the king a prophet. Well, in English, that makes the king the indirect object, he the subject, and the prophet the direct object. Well, only one of those is right, the prophet is the direct object, but hamelik is not the indirect object. Hamelik is the subject. Alright, so that's why I say, if you just translate this, he sent, and then the king, and then the prophet, and put a period on it, that is not translation. You've basically done the Hebrew analysis and stopped, you've only done one stage of translation. Stage one is analyze each Hebrew word, which means you parse it, you find the root, you find the inflected meaning, how would you gloss this? You determine what type of word it is, this is a verb, this is a noun, this is a noun. And then you determine what is the function of these words. The verb is the main action. This noun is functioning as the subject, this noun is functioning as the direct object. Now that I know that, I can jump to stage two of translation, which is building the sentence in English. This is the step that students are skipping. And the way that you go through building the sentence in English is you ask English, hey, English, what do you want first in your sentence? English wants the subject first, so you come over here and you grab your subject, and you put your subject in first. He is not in this sentence, the word he that we glossed shalach with is not in this sentence at all, okay? We start with the subject. English, what do you want after the subject? English wants the verb, so now we come over and we grab our verb. I don't bring he sent over here, because I already have a subject, so I just bring sent, the king's sent. English, what do you want after your verb? Give me the direct object, okay? So now I come back over and I find my direct object, the prophet, and I bring that in. Now that I've done step one, analyzing each Hebrew word, and I've done step two, building the sentence in English, now I can put a period on the end, now I'm done with my translation. But I have to do both steps, I can't just analyze the Hebrew words one at a time, put a quick gloss, and then put a period on the end, that is not translation, okay? Uh, that is the main thing from lesson seven that I would stress, is make sure that you're asking yourself, once you've gotten this sentence analyzed, what is my subject? How do you know which one is the subject? Well, there are a few things you can check. First of all, whatever the subject is, it has to agree in gender and number with the verb. This verb is masculine singular, so your subject has to be masculine singular. Uh, your subject has to be a noun or a pronoun. I've got two nouns in the sentence, melik and, nah, hamelik and haNavi. Both of them are masculine singular, so either one could be the subject. I know that haNavi is not the subject because it's marked as the direct object. Et here tells me this is not the subject, this is the direct object. It doesn't mean that hamelik has to be the subject, because maybe haNavi, or hamelik has some other function. There's no marker for the subject in Hebrew. So I have to figure out, is there any other function that hamelik could be performing in this sentence? Well, so far, we've only learned three functions. We've learned subject, we've learned direct object, and we've learned object of the preposition. There is no preposition here, so it's not an object of the preposition. There is no definite, there is no definite direct object marker. If melik were not definite, then it could still be a direct object. But if you have a compound direct object, you're usually going to have a vav. Since this is definite, and it doesn't have the direct object marker, it can't be the direct object, especially since we already have a direct object. So in that case, the only role left for it to fulfill in this sentence is the role of subject. So we determined that hamelik is the subject by elimination. We've eliminated all the other possible roles, so that's all it can be. Alright, so now we know it's the subject. It'd be great if Hebrew had a marker for subject, like it has a marker for, um, direct object, but it doesn't have that. So now that we know this is subject, we can now build our English sentence. If hamelik weren't here, how would we build the English sentence? Well, let's ignore hamelik for a second. Let's go down here to number five, because that's essentially the same type of thing. So here we don't have a subject, so we'll go through, we'll analyze the Hebrew. My first word is et ha'aretz. Well, as soon as I see et plus a definite article, I'm ninety-five percent sure this is going to be my definite direct object. If I take this article off, I'm left with a'aretz, which is weird, uh, because it's not everetz, but we've already talked about how because everetz is accented with this olif, it's accented on the first syllable, that that has to do with why it shifts with the article to the comments there. So this is the land, it is a noun, and I know the function, it's the definite direct object. Alright, so I've fully parsed this word. Now I can move on to the next word. Shamar nu, okay? Shamar nu, this is going to be my verb, I recognize the nu suffix, that's one CP. And then the root shamar means guarded or kept watch. And so now that I've analyzed this whole sentence, I can go to English and I can ask English, what do you want first? English says, give me the subject first. Well, I don't have a subject, so what am I supposed to do? Well, I have to infer the subject from the verb. Alright, there is no subject in this sentence, but the form of the verb tells me that the subject has to be first-person common plural. In English, we use the pronoun we for that, so I'm going to bring down we. Alright, English, what do you want after the subject? Give me the verb, guarded. Not we guarded, it's not going to be we, we guarded. Just bring down guarded, the verb. English, what do you want after the verb? Give me the direct object. Et ha'aretz, the land, boom. Again, don't worry about this parenthetical stuff, I wish this wasn't here, but that is from lesson seven. And again, he doesn't really give you this two-pronged approach, but as far as the content of lesson seven goes, remember, yes, analyze each Hebrew word, absolutely, but don't stop there. Ask yourself, how does English build this sentence? What's my verb, what's my subject, what else do I have after that? Alright, any questions about sentences? Alright. Already kind of mentioned this a little bit, vowel changes. None of the information in this chapter are you going to have to provide for the midterm. Alright, um, this is again an explanatory chapter, you're not going to be tested on these rules. Um, you're not going to be asked, is this syllable open or closed? Now, you should know that for sure, you need to know that, but you're not going to be quizzed on, you're not going to be quizzed on, which, okay, it's going to highlight a syllable and say, is this syllable tonic, pre-tonic, or per-pretonic? That's not going to be on there. This is helpful information to have, but you're not going to be quizzed on it. Uh, what sort of vowels occur in an open pre-tonic syllable? You're not going to be asked that. What vowels will not reduce to a shavah? You're not going to be asked that. Alright, so all of this information is simply explanatory, you're not going to have to recall it necessarily uh, for the exam, you're not going to be asked about it explicitly. That doesn't mean the information won't help you on the midterm. Um, it will help explain what's going on, I just want you to know that there's not going to be those specific types of questions that I've asked, alright? Any questions about lesson eight as far as, you know? Again, I, I don't know what else to say other than you won't be quizzed on this information, but I want to make sure if you do have questions about lesson eight, that you have a chance to ask them.
It would be fun to go over a bit more, but I don't want to cloud my brain with stuff, I'm not getting tested on it.
Sure, sure, yeah. Alright.
So, um, min, and the, uh, the, the dropping of the n and the doubling, and then shrinking with the dagesh, can you just whip over that again?
Yeah, so let me find. Alright, so this is something that, um, I guess this is what I would. Yeah, normally in the video conferences, I go over the previous week's futato exercises. So I guess I could have presented this information, uh, but that's exactly what I would go over at this point. And I would tell you that what happens with noon in the min preposition, it's not just min. Anytime you have a noon closing a syllable with another consonant in the, uh, so what, what would be the best way to describe this? Okay, anytime you have a noon with a silent shavah. Anytime you have a noon with a silent shavah. This is somewhat compositional, because you're not going to see, you're never going to see a noon with a silent shavah in Hebrew, I don't think. But I'm trying to figure out how to reverse engineer this from what you will see. In order to explain what happens with min, you kind of have to take a compositional approach, because you're, you're going to see the baked cake, you're not going to see the uncooked ingredients that went into that cake. But part of what we're doing in this lesson is tasting the cake to figure out what ingredients went into it. So is it a carrot cake, is it, I guess maybe pie would be better. Is it, did, did apples go into this pie? Did, uh, sugar go into this pie, or did, you know, cherries go into this pie, that sort of a thing? When you've got the min preposition, this is what we call, um, an assimilated noon, okay? So the min preposition here, um, well, it's not this one, it's down here, right? Nope. Where's the min preposition? Does it really not occur until fourteen? Alright, well, let's just go down to fourteen then. Alright, so min ha'miz be'ach. Um, this is usually what will happen when the noun is definite. Min won't try to assimilate here, it'll be this makafe form. But if you are attaching min directly to the noun, then what happens is this noon, and I kind of think of it, I don't know if you guys remember, because I haven't seen it in a long time, but when I was a kid, my parents had, basically in my room, there was a, a blind. It's one of those where, you know, it's like opaque white, and you kind of tug on it and it rolls up. Does that sound familiar to anybody? Okay, so you got to kind of tug on it and it'll roll up, and then if you want to pull it down, you got to pull it slowly and it'll stop. But if you want to put it back up, you tug and it goes, okay? Imagine that's what's going on with the noon here. When the noon sees, when it, when it's going to get, basically it's going to get squished, it doesn't have the, uh, the social distancing of the makafe. It gets a little too close here. Um, noon is really a germaphobe, and especially during the pandemic, he's extra paranoid. And so what happens here, uh, he's cool if he's got the social distance of the makafe, but when that distance is gone, what happens is it's like you're, it's like you're tugging on the foot of the noon, and he goes, and rolls up into a ball and hides inside of the next letter. You know, he's timid, he's afraid he's going to get squished, he doesn't want to get squished. So being the scaredy cat he is, he rolls up into the fetal position and hides inside the next letter, alright? And you might think, wow, that's a really weird thing to happen, why is noon so scared? Well, it's not just Hebrew, okay? Um, this is a feature of the N sound in other languages as well, and we do the same thing in English, okay? It doesn't happen every time you add noon to a word in English, but it does happen with certain letters, okay? And we would call it an assimilated, and I guess, I don't know how to spell the letter N, but it's probably that. Here's where it happens. We have the prefix in, which basically negates whatever it's attached to. Incapable, indirect, inability, it, it just negates whatever is next to it. But when you put that next to certain letters, it also assimilates, and what that means is it basically doubles the next letter. So if you put in next to legal, we don't say illegal, we say illegal. And that N just doubles whatever the next letter is. That's what this dagesh is doing as well, okay? It's doubling the next letter, so instead of min miz be'ach, it's mimiz be'ach. Okay, so we do this with L, illegal, instead of illegal. Measurable, we don't say inmeasurable, we say immeasurable, we double that M. Irregular, we don't say irregular, we say ear, we double that R. And so that's what's happening here. Uh-oh. Uh-oh, I didn't want to do that. Ah! Undo. Control Z isn't working. Oh, no. Okay, shoot, that's not too bad, I'll just type it again. Alright, so we've got min with a silent shavah, miz be'ach, okay? Min miz be'ach. What's happening is the noon is getting squished here. And so what we do is we just grab its foot, and we tug it down, and it rolls up into a ball, and that scaredy cat noon is going to hide in the fetal position inside of the next letter. That means it doubles that letter, just like we see the doubling in immeasurable, okay? It's going to double that next letter. So we get mimiz be'ach, okay? Does that make sense, kind of what's going on there morphologically with the spelling? It's something, it's not just limited to Hebrew, this is something that the N sound does in other languages. Uh, for English, it's only certain letters that it does it with, but that's what's going on, is it's basically just converting itself into the letter that comes after it, just copycatting. And the way that Hebrew's going to write that is, it's not going to have two letters next to each other with a silent shavah between them. There's no point in that, so instead it just uses the dagesh. But I guess you could say an intermediate step here between these two would be. So we go from min miz be'ach to mimiz be'ach, and then Hebrew just simplifies that by putting these two letters together.
So just to, um, clarify, between thirteen and fourteen, we've got, um, uh, min, this is thirteen, so, um, min ha'miz be'ach. So from the altar, is that correct?
Yep.
And so fourteen, because it doesn't have the definite article, be from an altar?
Absolutely. You might think, well, why from an altar instead of just from altar? And the reason is simple, from altar isn't English, we don't say from altar. And, and so that's really as simple as the explanation is. Um, you have to, again, part, stage two of translation is, how would English communicate this? And if your translation is not English, then it's not an English translation, you know, that's kind of the way it goes, so. That, that's the way that min works there is, it's, it's just copycatting the next letter, and Hebrew simplifies that by just collapsing these two with the dagesh.
Thanks for that, Dan, that's what I wanted, I, I understood the concept, but I was trying to work it backwards in my head, say like for fourteen, where you see the, um, uh, was it heric, and with the dagesh, it's like, what, what does that mean? I know what it does, but why does it do it? Just kind of, it's kind of that, that working back to understand why, it, it just helps.
Yeah, the reason why it does that is because noon is a weak letter. And the weakness of noon is that it can't stand between two consonants without its own vowel. If you get a noon between two consonants without its own vowel, it's going to hide inside the next letter. Alright, um, well, that's prepositions involve conjunction. I guess the only other thing to kind of be aware of here is what happens, what is the relationship between a preposition and a definite noun when you've got the definite article on there? Because this can be a little bit tricky, so let's just walk through this situation, the, um, these are all separate, or these are all independent, no. Here we go, okay. So kam is be'ach. If you see an inseparable preposition without the shavah, it's going to stand out. And you have to ask yourself, does the vowel of the, is the vowel of the inseparable preposition, is that a definite article vowel? Or is that one of these weird situations where? Let's see here. For example, oh, that's vav, that's not. Those are all vav.
I'm not sure I understand.
Okay, here we go. So for example, if you've got a preposition, an inseparable preposition, and it has a patach under it, that patach may be a sign of the definite article, because remember, the preposition just kind of stand, it just kind of covers over the hay of the definite article. Now, you're left with the definite article vowel and the dagesh in the next letter, if the next letter has a dagesh. But is ba ar, ba arzot, is this in the lands, or is this just in lands? I mean, it's got the patach here, isn't that the sign of the definite article? Well, not in front of an olif. The vowel of the definite article in front of an olif is kamets, not patach. So that's how you know that there's no definite article here. When you've got the segel, well, sometimes the definite article has a segel. But that's only in front of an unaccented chet, I'm sorry, I think it's an accented chet, hey, or ayin. And that's not what we have here, we have the olif, so this, if it were the definite article, this should be kamets again.